Anna Moffett, a senior at Carmel High School. Jenna Kraus, a seventh grade student at Carmel Middle School. Ellie Stewart, a kindergarten teacher or student at Cherry Tree. Ryan Roat, a first grade student at Clay Center Elementary. Halak Ja, an eighth grade student at Clay Middle School. Audrey Zhang, a second grade student at College Wood Elementary. Reedy Dangle, a sixth grade student at Creekside. Zoe Johnson, a fourth grade student at Forestdale Elementary. Lydia Maloney, a kindergarten student at Mohawk Trails Elementary. Jedman Chen, a fourth grade student at Prayer Trace Elementary. Joey Mitchell, a third grade student at Smokey Row. Lucy Park, a kindergarten student at Town Meadow. Annabelle Zirkelbach, a fourth grade student at West Clay. And Bella Tayez, a third grade student at Woodbrook. Young artists, thank you so much for your fantastic work.
Congratulations again to our young artists. We will take just a minute if you guys want to go ahead and head out. And then we will resume the rest of our evening meeting. All right, we will go ahead and get started on our next presentation. Tonight, we are celebrating Highlight, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Terry Ramos. All you.
I can do whatever I want, he said. That's what he said. Thank you, Dr. B. My name is Terry Ramos. I'm the department chair for media and communications at the high school, and I just want to first thank the board and the administration for having us out this evening. We truly appreciate that. Your continued support, of course, very important to us. I too, like Dr. Dudley mentioned, want to start out by thanking our teachers. I might be a little biased in that I think the communications department has some of the hardest working teachers around. They do put in lots and lots of hours beyond the school day. It truly is amazing, everything that they do for our kids. And it shows in some of these awards that you're going to see today. Their leadership and their skills that they provide to these students will go beyond even anything in media or journalism. It expands their professionalism and the very skills that they're going to need in order to move forward in whatever career path they choose. So, thank you very much to our teachers. You guys can all wave back there. They're going to be up here. Beyond that, I just want to take a moment and recognize the idea that our programs are really, really old. I don't know how many of you know this, but our yearbook, for example, is over 100 years old. Our newspaper is almost 100 years old. WHJE is working on 55, 56 years, something like that. And then finally, next year, we have a milestone for CHTV, and it's going to be 45 years old. So, lots to come with that. But the reason I mention it is because what amazes me about these teachers and these programs is that they continue to evolve. And our Highlight, for example, our newspaper, is all online. WHJE is just everywhere on the web, online, at events. So, it's just incredible. All of them have moved forward in many ways. So, again, just to highlight some of their phenomenal work. With that, and I thank you for a moment to say all of that about our teachers and our programs. But to get you started learning about the different things that our students have done, I will go ahead and introduce the Highlight First, sponsored by, it's going to be you, Mr. Streisel. Actually, it's Highlight First.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to represent some outstanding students. My name is Jim Streisel, and I am the advisor of the Highlight News staff at Carmel High School. And it is my privilege to recognize the Highlight staff for earning top honors in several state and national competitions. These awards include the following. For the 2022-23, that's this year's Highlight website, the seventh consecutive National Scholastic Press Association Online Pacemaker Finalist Award, and a second consecutive Indiana High School Press Association Website Hoosier Star Award. Of note, this is only the second year for the IHSPA to offer the website award, so we're off to a pretty good start there. Additionally, the last year's staff, the 2021-22 Highlight, was also recognized for its print publication. Of note, these mark the final print awards in the Highlight's nearly 90-year history as we moved fully online this year. The print awards include a fourth consecutive IHSPA Hoosier Star Award. That would be the 13th Hoosier Star in the last 14 years. An NSPA Print Pacemaker Finalist Award. That was the 12th consecutive year for the Highlight to earn that finalist status. And then, most recently, a Silver Crown in the hybrid category for the Columbia Scholastic Press Association. This coming year, we will enter the CSPA's online-only category. And with that, it's my honor to recognize the Highlight Senior Management Team, which is here on behalf of our more than 60-member Highlight News staff. Starting with our managing editors, and if they would come around, are they here already? Marissa Finney, who will be attending IU in the fall. Riley LaFerrier will also be attending IU this fall. Maddie Musterco will be attending Purdue University this fall. Gillian Moore, who will attend Northwestern University in the fall. Darshini Shankar, who will be going to Purdue University. Ragav Sriram will be attending the University of California Irvine in the fall. And Daniel Tian, who will be going to Purdue. And finally, our two co-editors-in-chief this year, Archit Kolra, who will be at Yale University in the fall. And Chen Yaolu, who will be going to the University of Pennsylvania.
All right, and to introduce the awards for the Pinnacle Yearbook, we have Claire Burke.
Good evening. Thank you to Dr. Beresford and to the board for allowing our students to be recognized this evening. I am Claire Burke. I'm the advisor for the Pinnacle Yearbook staff at the high school. I am just so excited to celebrate the outstanding work that these seniors have done this year. The Pinnacle enjoyed a truly memorable year. The 2022 book was named a Hoosier Star from the Indiana High School Press Association. I know Jim mentioned that award in his laundry list of Highlight Awards. For the uninitiated, that's a state championship in journalism, so we're proud of our students. The 2022 book was also critiqued by the National Scholastic Press Association and received an All-American with four marks of distinction. That's about as good as you can get on the national level, so we're very excited. Safe to say that the work is being recognized all around. In addition, two seniors were first-place winners in individual categories from the Indiana High School Press Association. Congratulations to Emma Barrett and Abby Burns for winning Division III Yearbook Album First Place. Come on up, Abby. That is for their work in the 2022 Pinnacle's People section. Finally, I'd also like to recognize our senior editors. These first two, these first two staffers, seniors, have two years of service. First one is Managing Editor Evelyn Nielsen. And our Reference Editor, Lily Wykel. The remaining seniors have all served on the Pinnacle staff for three years of their high school careers. Again, Emma Barrett, Reference Editor this year. Abby Burns, again, student life and academics. Come back over, you've got another certificate. Sorry, my fault. Logan Davis, one of our editors-in-chief. Claire Ennis, a Senior Ads Editor. Claire Medley, Social Media Manager. And last but not least, Nora Huber, our other co-editor-in-chief. Thank you to all of these outstanding student journalists for their years of professionalism and hard work.
I just noticed, too, our building administration standing directly across from me. So, a big thank you to Dr. Ferris and my Assistant Principal, Wes Drew, for their continued support. All right, up next, we have CHTV, and that is Mrs. Brandia Stojic.
Hello. Thank you to the board and to Dr. Beresford for having us tonight to honor these students. My name is Brandia Stojic, and I am the advisor for CHTV, the television station at Carmel High School. And this year, students wrote, filmed, edited, posted hundreds of hours of award-winning content just for our high school. From our social media on several platforms, to our live announcements every other day, to our growing YouTube channel, to our brand-new website, the students of CHTV should be very proud of all the work they've done this year, regardless of any awards. But with that being said, I'm still excited to recognize our staff members, those who are here and those who could not be here tonight as well. CHTV was honored to win several first-place awards at the 2023 Intercollegiate Broadcasting System Awards in New York City. Hundreds of high school and college students from across the country attend this two-day conference and award ceremony, which is right in the heart of Midtown. We took 40 students this year, and they attended multiple sessions on everything from scriptwriting to marketing to editing, and also got to experience some of the culture and excitement of NYC, including the subway. We are excited to honor our students. It is our station's first year winning first-place national awards, and we won multiple. So, I would like to honor these students. They won awards in everything from Best Comedy Program to Best Talk Show Program to Best Use of YouTube, to Best Graphics. So, here we go. Zach Francis. Ireland Jones. Scott Croner. Trinity Bederman. Morgan Bishop. Caroline Petrie. Jack Ringenberg. Darian Watson. Ryan Conley. Ava Lo. And just a round of applause for all of the staff members, because we also took home the award for Best Newscast.
Last but not least, we have WHJE 91.3, The Voice of the Greyhounds, with Dominic James. Come on up.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. It's lovely to be here. Yeah, my name's Dominic James from WHJE. And the radio students went to New York with TV this year. And again, we won many awards, which I'm pleased to say. And we also entered another competition, the state competition, ISB, sorry, IASB, the Indiana Association of School Broadcasters, and we won a few awards there as well. And I'm delighted to say that the students here tonight brought home individual awards. But we also, we were runners-up in the national competition this year, which was fantastic. And we won the website award for both state and national competitions, where all our podcasts are published, and where we have our Listen Live access to the station as well. So, very pleased to get a double in that. But really, really pleased to honor the individual students here. And in no particular order, we have Mazamun. Cameron Geddes. Ally Wolf. Bethany Ducat. Ally Davis. Jacob Fletcher. Tommy Fagan. Griffin Hall. Quinn Strazinski. Andrew Hillsman. I will pause with Andrew here. Andrew astonishingly won the play-by-play, best play-by-play for football in both state and national competitions. He's very, very unusual. And he's going on to study sports broadcasting at IU. LJ Shreve. Kate Belanger. Declan Anderson. Sophie Cassidy. And I believe that's all the students who were able to make it tonight, but I will just call out the following, who had to make their excuses. Will Simmons, Ava Beckman, Kevin Lee, and Cooper Inskeep. Well done. Well done.
Thank you so much to our students. Thank you so much to the parents that support them and the teachers that lead them. Again, thank you, guys. Congratulations. We'll now take a short pause, as you guys can head out, as it is a school night. I know. It's gonna be exciting. My phone is blowing up as we speak. That's what she just did. Thank you. Go that way. The first group is three. And two in the second. Two, four, and five are in the first group. Okay, changing gears. We will now move on to the public comment section of our meeting. Public comments shall be guided by the rules notated in the handout that everyone received upon entering. Per Board Bylaw 01673, speakers will be placed in Group One and Group Two. Those in Group One consist of CCS students, parents, guardians, employees, and Carmel residents. They'll be permitted to speak first, followed by participants in Group Two. The order of speakers will be determined by a random drawing by Dr. Oestreich. The numbers will be placed in a basket, and Dr. Oestreich will call out two numbers at a time. The first will speak, and the second will be on deck. When your name is called, you will go to the microphone located right over here, state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. We have a timer at the podium, so that you can gauge your time, and we have a total of 30 minutes slated for public comment. A countdown time will be on the screen, and we want to thank you for participating. I do want to call your attention to the guidance of the Public Comment Bylaw. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer, myself, and must preface your comments by announcement of your name, group affiliation applicable. Comments may not reference specific corporation employees, patrons, or students. They shall be directed to the board, and no person may address or question individual board members. As a general matter, the school board will not act on or respond to questions or comments made during public comment, but will take them under advisement. And lastly, I would just like to remind you that if needed, I will interrupt, warm, or terminate a person's statement if the statement goes over time, is a personal attack on a student, employee, or school official, harassing, obscene, irrelevant. If needed, we will request you to leave the meeting when that person does not observe reasonable decorum. But I have good hope that we won't have to do any of that. That being said, we're gonna go ahead and get started with our Group One. Dr. Oestreich, can you let me know the first two numbers?
Absolutely. We have number two, and then number five is on deck.
Okay. Mary Rose Simons, Simmons, and then Jim May is on deck.
Hi, good evening. I'm Mary Rose Simons. I am here as a representative of the PACS Program of Academic Exchange, and I'm also a mother to an eighth grader and a fifth grader in the district. I know how wonderful the schools are and my kids, and working with all these exchange students that I work with, my kids would just love to host. They can't wait to host an exchange student. Looking at Carmel's current policy, it looks like one program is included, and we'd like to address the board to see about expanding that policy, to include a program like ours. So PACS has students from all around the world. We have partners, lots of partners, from all different countries. We're especially proud here in Indiana of the Kennedy-Luger YES Program, which was a bipartisan measure passed after 9/11 to increase diplomacy. We have so many host families in Indiana especially want to host with that program. And of course, seeing all the wonderful accolades and things that happened tonight, it's, I can't imagine a better district than Carmel for a student to have just that amazing American experience. So with that, we'd like to know how to expand Carmel's offerings of different programming, and how we might make this a possibility for more students. You're not allowed to answer.
I can't, no, we won't respond, but thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Jim May.
And President Browning, number four, is on deck.
Okay, Anthony Hendricks.
Hi, I'm Jim May, parent of two kids at Woodbrook Elementary. And honestly, I was not planning on offering public comment tonight, so bear with me. I'm not great off the cuff. The reason I'm up here, on my way to the meeting, or as I was walking out the door, I received an email from a concerned parent that they'd received today that starts, "I'm writing this letter to you not as a CCS board trustee, but as a Carmel citizen. I'm sharing only facts that are publicly available." And it goes on to kind of have a call to action, explaining that the board may vote on replacing our mental health director tonight, and if so, that's a call of the administration, not the board, but people should show up and speak against it. I think it was important that that be out there in the interest of transparency. I don't know who showed up tonight because of that call to action, but I thought you should hear from a parent that is supportive of the administration, is supportive of what we're doing for mental health. You know, my kids have both struggled significantly after the pandemic, and what the schools have done with their approach to social-emotional learning, you know, our oldest, who is in second grade now, is thriving now. And I mean, that is a lot of what we saw last year in first grade with his teacher applying social-emotional learning principles and getting him caught up and up to speed. Our youngest is in kindergarten, and he continues to struggle, but he would be struggling so much harder if it was not for the approach of the schools. So I get really tired of the propaganda that goes out against our schools, and seeing this just really infuriated me. I'm not going to mention the board member, obviously, because I know that's against the rules. I'm guessing you guys will look into this and figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Hendricks.
And President Browning, number one, is on deck.
Okay, let me find my papers. That would be Sabrina Hinckley. Go ahead, Mr.-
All right, thank you. Good evening. So I wanted to make a couple of comments this evening about the upcoming position. Sorry. Anthony Hendricks, parent of Carmel Clay school member, school student. Thank you again. Wanted to make a couple of comments this evening regarding the position, upcoming position of mental health coordinator. Wanted to kind of make a couple of points. One, obviously, this is a very critical role for the district, given, you know, situation that I think we're all very familiar with. This transition point represents a kind of an opportunity for us to take a very close look at this role, and frankly, you know, look at opportunities to make improvements. I would ask that, as we go through this, that we focus on the process of identifying candidates. And, you know, as we live in Carmel, and we're frequently reminded that, in a lot of ways, Carmel is compared not with other cities in the state of Indiana, but compared with cities nationally. And I think of those types of criteria, kind of best-in-class opportunities or school systems, that we should compare ourselves to as well. And so as we focus on the process, being able to cast a wide net, look at a large population of candidates, we've got a wide selection to really make great selections. Additionally, I'd ask that we focus on candidates with proven results. So I think that as we go through this robust process, we're gonna find a lot of candidates that have great credentials, but I think we should really focus on those that have prior experience where they've moved the needle in a positive way in other prior experiences, prior districts. So that's strong focus on results. Finally, I'd like to ask that we strongly consider a candidate who can be an advocate for our students, but also an advocate for protection of the data that's associated with these students. You know, they're gonna be talking with and have access to extremely critical information. Our students are in a whole new world of data access. These students will, unlike a lot of us here in the audience who grew up in the Google world, but we were, you know, in our 20s and 30s when that first came around, our students are being mapped and imprinted from basically the day that they're born. And so, as one of the various areas, the mental health coordinator will have access to this data. I'd ask that we look at that and really have somebody that's a strong advocate. I'd like to thank you for the time and opportunity this morning and taking this under advisement.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, Sabrina.
Hi, I'm Sabrina. I am also here on behalf of-
Can you say your last name? I'm sorry.
Sabrina Hickey.
Thank you.
I'm also here on behalf of PACS Program of Academic Exchange. Mary had spoken about the Kennedy-Luger Youth Exchange and Study Program. It's amazing. I'm currently hosting a student from Egypt through that program. These kids, I noticed that you had a student who was going to Yale in your group. These kids, the selection process for this merit-based scholarship is harder to get than going to Yale, or Stanford, or Harvard. We get 70 countries in our program. About half of those are merit-based scholarship kids through the Kennedy-Luger Youth Exchange. We also get students from the FLEX program, which is Future Leaders Exchange. Those kids come from former Soviet-controlled countries, and it's just as hard to get that program as the YES program. The kids come here with excellent English, they come with support, and they become leaders in their home countries. Many of them go home to go into diplomatic positions. Some of them do not, but it's a, it's an opportunity to promote public diplomacy, to break down stereotypes here in our community, and to see culture in a different way. We have a very diverse community, but these kids, they have to come, and they have to share their culture, they have to do enhancement activities, they have to get engaged in the community, and it's really beneficial for our kids here. So I ask again, can we consider expanding the programs?
Thank you for your comments. And our final speaker today is Kristi Reynolds.
Hi, I'm Kristi Reynolds. I am also here in support of Mary Simons and her family. I have been with PACS since 1997, and have seen the effects of having exchange students. I was also an educator myself in a small rural school in southern Indiana. But those schools, while very small, are actually some of the most welcoming. They don't have much diversity, so they welcome exchange students because they want to be able to offer that to their own students. Now, being a large school system, you have a lot of, you have a lot more diversity. But those students that are here are trying to assimilate into the American culture. Our students, who come through the US Department of State-sponsored programs, both the FLEX and the YES program, they are mandated, they have to share their culture. They do it through IEW, International Education Week, several other things. But I think, you know, probably one of the most, I don't know, at least for me, one of the most proud things is the fact that it is, one of the programs, the YES program, is the Kennedy-Luger Scholarship Program that was a bipartisan bill. And anything that's created in a bipartisan atmosphere that both sides can agree on is a good thing. Seems like something that Carmel should want to be a part of. And so basically, we're just asking that you take into consideration it may be expanding the policy to include PACS as well as the Rotary Program. We differ from Rotary in that it's not, you know, better or worse, but we differ from Rotary in that Rotary students stay with three different families, whereas a PAC student stays with one family the whole year, or semester, depending on. The way that we are similar is that Rotary allows students here to go abroad. But both the FLEX and the YES program also offer that, and they are also scholarship. They're difficult to get into, but it affords our students the opportunity to travel abroad and go to another country. So just would like for you guys to, again, consider us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And that is the end of public comment for today. We will now move on to consent, and my computer's on the fritz. Could I look at your paper of the items in consent? Thank you. So consent items include payroll, approval of gift applications. Today, we have the Jeffrey Blair family donated $500 to Cherry Tree Elementary Drama Club to be used for the purpose of props and costumes, the minutes from the workshop session of April 11th, 2023, the minutes from the regular session of April 24th, 2023, and the minutes from the regular session, February 27th, 2023, and personnel, oh, payroll, did I say that? And personnel. Okay. Thank you. Sorry. My computer's like, Katie, you need to talk, so we're not gonna work right now. All right, we will now move on. Do I have a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Second? Second. Comment? Discussion, sorry. Discussion. Greg? Can you turn his mic on?
Should I start over?
No. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm talking about the personnel report, I'm sorry about that, that I received last Wednesday, and I became aware that Brooke Lawson is recommended as Director of Her Mental Health effective July 1st. So I'm being asked to approve that tonight. The only information I had previously had been told regarding the filling of this crucial position is that she is one of 15 candidates that we considered, and only one of the 15 candidates were black. I was later informed by someone outside of CCS Carmel that she led the mental health and social-emotional learning endeavors at our district to our east, Hamilton Southeastern. It's clear that our children are clearly experiencing a mental health crisis, and we can certainly all agree that we have a problem to solve. And this is where we find common ground. Where we differ is our solutions, and this is where we need to work together. I provided commentary at two recent board meetings on the state of our mental health crises, and we must not simply focus on treating the symptoms. We understand that the causes which lead to us to effective and preventative solutions, or we must understand the causes that lead to effective and preventive solutions. Ben Franklin once said that "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure," and we all know this to be true. We have had a social-emotional learning endeavor instituted here at Carmel Clay for more than eight years, and I believe Hamilton Southeastern has also had a similar program there. I think we need to ask ourselves, why are our children having so many problems if we prepared them for the inevitable challenges of life? Why are they not more resilient? What can we do to build resiliency? And this is a very important position to fill. I request that we postpone approving this position tonight until the board can provide input on our vision of what we need to fully address our mental health crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Any other comments for discussion? Ms. Jackson?
You know, Greg, thank you for sharing your thoughts and concerns. You know, I do see a need to ensure that what we put in place for students- You know, I do see a need to ensure that what we put in place for students, not just focus on symptoms, but uncover the why. I think as a parent of two children, you know, it's very complex to really dive into the why when we see that not just children have these mental challenges, mental health challenges, but also adults, and we can't seem to figure out why adults have it. So it's a very complex issue. And I don't know that delaying filling the role is going to help us uncover the why any faster. Being a parent who has a child who was involved in a shooting at the airport just last July, I was there with him, I mean, this is a very personal issue for me. And, you know, while I would have loved to have had even more diversity in our candidate slate, I do trust that our administration has tried to really vet the best person to fill the role, to support our children. And so, you know, happy to continue to discuss your concerns and needs because that's why we're a board that is diverse, but I'm just grateful that we're not going to delay filling that role any longer, so.
Any other comments? Okay. We will now take a vote on consent. All those in favor of approving consent, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those in favor of saying no?
No.
Four to one passes. We will now move on to, oh, yeah, sorry, I was in a role. Okay, Dr. O'Stryke.
Good evening, President Browning, Dr. Biersford, and members of the board. We are very pleased to announce Mrs. Brooke Lawson as our new Director of Mental Health. In this role, Mrs. Lawson will oversee all services and programs provided by the district to support the mental and emotional well-being of students and staff. Mrs. Lawson has extensive experience, having worked in a variety of school-based mental health leadership roles, where she led the implementation of multiple layers of comprehensive mental health services for students district-wide. She recently authored a $5.7 million federal school-based mental health grant that provides additional supports to students in her previous district. Brooke was named Administrator of the Year in 2022 by the Indiana School Counseling Association, received an Outstanding Public Service Award from the Jefferson Foundation in 2021, was named the Hero of the Month in February of 2020 by Prevail, and as of this Friday, she was named the 2023 Indianapolis Colts Classroom Quarterback of the Year amidst hundreds of applications. Brooke has earned her bachelor's degree from Purdue University and her master's of social work from IUPY. We are thrilled to welcome Brooke Lawson from across the river to join our team here in Carmel, and we are excited for our students' future under Brooke's leadership. Thank you.
Dr. B.
We just have a little present for Brooke and her family, if you guys would come up.
Welcome, welcome. Hello. We got a crummy swag. This is a media. This is the media.
Wow.
This is kind of like, you know, we're in a, yeah.
Yeah.
No, no.
Put them up, put them up.
Hold them up.
Okay, yes.
Draft day.
I'm trying to work that metaphor.
Oh, look at that.
Well, let's do one for now, let's go inside. Okay. Yeah. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Brooke and family, a very warm welcome to Carmel Clay Schools. All right. We will go ahead and move to our next item, the action portion of our meeting tonight, the resolution to authorize the administration to request the percentage calculation by the auditor. Dr. B.
All right. Thank you. Give you a little background. This first step required in order to put a referendum renewal question on the November 2023 ballot is to ask the board to adopt the attached resolution, which is in your packet, which authorizes the president of the board, the superintendent, or his designated formerly request, and this is pursuant to state statute, that the county auditor calculate the percentages to be inserted into the question. So what I'm asking for is just permission to take our question to the auditor, and then we're going to discuss that just a little bit later in the meeting. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution to authorize the administration to request the percentage calculation by the auditor?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. I'll go ahead and start, so just to kind of, in very basic terms, we are right now voting for you just to be able to find out what the percentage of the referendum would be if it goes to that next step, or the question.
Correct. The law requires the governing body to make this request in the resolution to school administration. So following the adoption of this resolution, then I will send a letter to the Hamilton County Auditor and formally requesting the average residential business increase due to the referendum levy being calculated using the exact existing maximum referendum rate of .19, which was originally approved in 2017. So the board will be asked to adopt a resolution at its June 26th meeting approving the form of the referendum question and determining the need for this referendum.
I'm going to say it right back to you. So you are going to the county auditor to request the percentage for the same rate that we currently have.
Correct. Correct. And so, yeah, basically, it's a letter that I will then take to the auditor. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Questions from the board? Greg?
Yeah. I think the mic's on this time. The, we may have talked about this before, so I apologize if I missed it, but I know the 2017 referendum was for a seven-year duration, and this year, we're going to go, this time, we're going for eight years?
Actually, state law changed since that time, and it moved referendums from seven years to eight years.
Okay, thank you. Also, we're requesting voters to approve the, you know, the same rate that you mentioned, but I can testify as a property taxpayer that my assessed value has gone up 40% in the last three years. I'm retired, and all my income has decided to not follow that inflation curve. So my question is this, is the rate's flat, but I assume, and I don't know what's happened with property values, businesses, and other places that pay property tax, but I assume that it's going to be a lot more money coming in from this part of our revenue. So the question I have is this, is, you know, given that, I understand we have inflation, I know buses, you'd mentioned before, are going up quite a bit, but do you see we'll have a net increase or decrease, or do you predict we'll hold the same, given the inflation number and then our increased revenue from property tax?
Yeah, what we explained, we explained this before, is that it's hard to predict what amount of money we're going to need in eight years. And we contemplated that, and as to whether we should ask to raise that referendum rate or not. But then, if you're like me, I was really excited that my property was worth a lot more money until I got my tax bill, and then I wasn't quite as excited about it as I was. But we believe that because of the increase in the assessed valuation, that we will not need to raise that rate any higher, and that that, as far as inflation goes, that that increase in AV will cover what the inflationary possibilities might be for the future. It's not 100%. You know, if it was a great, you know, like, huge amount of money, we'd probably treat it much like we did the safety referendum, where we didn't collect all the money that we could have collected in those early years of the safety referendum, because, you know, what we're asking for is this rate, and then the budget really determines how much money needs to be collected. So we feel a little bit, I wouldn't say, I'm not 100% confident, eight years from now, we're going to be okay or not, but I feel pretty confident with the way that inflation works and costs rise and flow, that it should stay pretty good, pretty even. So we're confident at this point in time that this is the right thing to do, rather than to raise it, so that makes sense.
All right.
Any other questions?
Anything to that?
Oh, Roger?
Talk to the money guy. First, the, as you know, our referendum fund is controlled by a rate rather than the levy. So the levy is just the amount of money that you raise, and the rate's the rate. And so the state legislature, by their action, was aware that our referendum is used to, essentially to supplement our education fund, which about 93% to 94% spent on salary and benefits. So they understood that as time goes on, salaries typically go up with raises and cost of living and so forth, not down. And so generally speaking, until this year, the revenue increased, the rate's been the same, as Greg noted, but the revenue has increased three or four percent, sometimes five percent, over the, since 2010, when we first established a referendum, which has been, which includes then, the factors are inflation, but also in Carmel growth. And so we're not particularly, you know, growing much now, but when we were growing, there was also an understanding that with a rate control rather than a levy control, that if you were a community that was growing, then you were going to have more assessed value, not just because, you know, the homes went up or the businesses went up, but also because we were adding to the inventory. And so however this, for '22, payable in '23, the average rate went up almost 12%. I think it was, I think it was right around 12%. And so, which is more than it's gone up since we've had a referendum, but as everybody knows, we've also had significant inflation. And so now, our salaries didn't go up 12%, but we had, have a two-year contract with our teachers over the last biennium, and when we settled that contract, we assumed that our enrollment, for example, was going to increase about over 200 students over the two years, and instead it decreased about 300 and some. And so for each student, the way the formula works at this funding from the state, we receive about $6,500 per student. So if you do the math, that's a differential of about $3.8 million that we thought we were going to get that we didn't. Now, with less enrollment, we also reduce staff because, but not all staff, because with less students, we need less teachers in the classroom just because of the class size and so forth. But unfortunately, it's not reasonable that we're going to be able to reduce portions of all the other staff. So, and I'm talking about, first with teachers, so you have art, music, and PE teachers, media specialists, counselors, and so forth, and when you, if you lose, you know, 100 kids, over 15 schools and 16,000 students, you're likely not going to be able to reduce every position proportionate to the loss of revenue. And that's, in my opinion, the problem with how the schools are funded. So in the end, we were able to offset that loss of revenue by about half. So it still left us with, you know, almost $2 million. In addition to that, we found it necessary to generally give teachers more experience because of the shortage of staff. And so that, for example, a few years ago, our average new hire for, you know, replacement of teachers leaving and retiring was about a bachelor's and three years of experience. And so our pay schedules, based on your amount of education and your experience, those are the two factors. Well, now that's moved up about two steps, and for our salary schedule, that translates to about $4,500 per person on average. So that's another about $300,000. So my point is, is that we were very fortunate to, and we have always known, we're very fortunate to have a local referendum. We've been particularly fortunate in the last few years because absent this additional money, we would be having conversations about where we're going to cut a couple million dollars, because that's about the additional amount, by the way. And so it's not an insignificant amount, and, but it's about 1.4% of our budget. Our budget's $146 million, and, but it's an important 1.4% when you're talking about people and that are necessary to educate the children. So that's kind of the overview of it. We have a history that if we don't need the money, we don't raise the taxes, even though we have the authority. So as was mentioned earlier, when the safety referendum was established at five cents, we, the first three years, we established it at three and a half cents, because we didn't need the money, because it wasn't fully implemented in that case. In this case, the circumstances are different, but we do need the money. And we may not over the next eight years, and if we don't, I'm comfortable that we'll have conversations about whether we should lower the approved rate. We certainly won't be able to increase it unless we renew it or have another referendum. So I believe, as, you know, the finance person, that it's too early to make that decision. And then finally, if we did make that decision, it's about one, one and a half cents. And not to minimize one and a half cents, but our tax rate is $2.06. So it won't solve my problem as a taxpayer in terms of the inflation on my house. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will now take a vote, unless, does anyone have any questions about what he said? Yeah, yeah.
Because it's a lot of information. When you said the experience was stepped up, or some sort of phrase like that, can you explain what that means? Because I don't understand that.
I can. Carmel has a very, what has been a very typical salary schedule, all across the country, really, but, which means that our salaries are determined, we call it a lane and a step schedule. So there are lanes, starting with a bachelor's degree, moving to the right to a doctorate degree. And the higher the degree, the more you're paid. Pay's not negotiable. The schedule's, you know, negotiated, and that's what you're paid, based on this criteria. Then the step increase is for the experience. So a teacher, for example, starts out at about $42,000 with no experience and a bachelor's degree, and they're over $85,000 18 years later if they have a master's degree. And so that's as they move down and oftentimes across the schedule if they gain more education. So, but in Carmel, our contract also provides that we can place the teacher any place we want on that schedule. That is, we don't have to, most districts, traditionally, whatever the experience level was, that's where they got paid, which meant that an experienced teacher could find it very difficult to get a job because you had two candidates and one had, you know, two years' experience, and the other one had 18, and the difference is almost double. Financially, you might strongly consider that, you know, the younger, younger by experience candidate. But our schedule provides that we can place the teacher and provide, or give them any experience that we want. Now, when we had 400 or 500 applicants for a position, we rarely gave full experience credit. It was good for the teacher- The schedule's, you know, negotiated, and that's what you're paid, based on this criteria. Then the step increase is for the experience. So, a, a teacher, for example, starts out at about $42,000 with no experience and a bachelor's degree. And they're over $85,000 18 years later if they have a master's degree. And so, that's as they move down and oftentimes across the schedule if they gain more education. So, but in Carmel, our contract also provides that we can place the teacher anyplace we want on that schedule. That is, we don't have to, most districts, traditionally, whatever the experience level was, that's where they got paid. Which meant that an experienced teacher could find it very difficult to get a job because you had two candidates and, and one had, you know, two years' experience, and the other one had 18, and the difference is almost double. Financially, you, you might strongly consider that, you know, the younger, younger by experience candidate. But our schedule provides that we, we can place the teacher and provide, or give them any experience that we want. Now, when we had four or 500 applicants for a position, we, we rarely gave full experience credit. It was good for the teacher because they couldn't otherwise find a job if they had a lot of experience. It's good for us because we didn't have to pay at the top of the schedule. So, that worked very well, I think, for years. But it doesn't work so well anymore because we don't have 500 applicants for a position. And, and if you, you know, you keep up with things, you know that school districts are raising salaries, and we are trying to do the same, particularly for, at the beginning level. And so, there's now choice. And so, if we don't offer the money, our neighbors will. And so, we're, again, fortunate to have a referendum, which helps us to be competitive. But, so what's happened is, is that average, we, we call it turnover savings, because there's a cost of that step increase. But then it's reduced to some extent with about 70 or so teachers that we hire that typically come in at less experience and therefore less pay. But that has changed fairly recently because market conditions to where we're now, that average new hire is a couple steps higher, which, as I said earlier, is about $4,500 per position.
I give you, I've heard it as, as low as one-third of the number of students who are entering education programs in the state of Indiana. I've heard it as high as 50%. So, you can imagine that a lot of the movement in staff now is transfers. So, we're not getting kids coming in with zero amount of, of experience. We're getting teachers that are teaching in another district that, that apply for the positions here. And, you know, I looked down at Dr. O'Stryke there. He's, he's hitting the pavement everywhere and out of state, trying to, to recruit folks in. So, right now, we're okay. But, you know, we'll have to see how this, how this, how bad it gets before it gets better.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. For those in the audience, stay tuned in the next couple of months because you're going to learn lots about school finance. So, we're going to learn lots and lots of good things. All right, we have had a motion, we've had a second discussion. Okay, all those in favor of approving the resolution to authorize the administration to request the percentage calculation for the auditor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries five to zero. We will now move on to 5.2, our materials adoption, Part II, Dr. Dudley.
Yes, thank you. So, last month, I brought to you a recommendation to approve materials adoption for this Part II. Included materials for our family consumer science courses, as well as some of our new courses that we're offering. And then some one-off courses, like our quantitative reasoning course, which is in our math department. The book that they looked at was not available yet until this Part II. So, tonight, I bring this to you with a recommendation to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Do I have a motion to approve materials adoption, Part II?
So moved.
Thank you, Kristen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Louise, discussion. Any others for discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving materials adoption, Part II, please signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries five to zero. We will now move on to change orders for the Carmel High School Performing Arts Center addition renovations, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is an add change order for the Performing Arts project in the amount of $25,356 and has to do with some remediation necessary for some, for flooring. And we'd recommend your approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the change orders for the Carmel High School Performing Arts Center addition and renovations?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson, discussion. Did you have something, Greg?
Yeah, just a point of clarification. I was reading the details, which I don't think the, the public has. But it sounds like the, the real driver in that was some chemicals were removed, were used to remove some asbestos floor tiles, and it leaves some kind of, at least, yeah, maybe you can explain that a little bit.
I'll try to. You're correct. It, it, when, when the tile was removed, which had asbestos in it, then there, there was a chemical put on the floor to, to remediate that process so that there was no concern going forward with regard to putting the new floor down. So, that was something that was not in the original bid. And, and, but we felt it was appropriate to, to do that work.
And that's necessary for the new tile to adhere properly?
I don't know that it's, 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 I'm not sure either, whether it's a matter of adhering. I, I, that may be part of it, as well as ensuring if there's any, any concern from a safety standpoint.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor of approving the change orders for Carmel High School Performing Arts, please signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries five to zero. We will now go on to a bid award for the West Clay Elementary School Playground Improvements. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is a part of our, the 2023 facility projects that the board had approved previously. This is a, a project at West Clay Elementary. And, and typically, we're, we're not finding it necessary to spend $1.8 million to, on a playground that's, unless it was new. But in this case, it is new. Because the, regrettably, the, the equipment that was put up on that playground when, when it was, when the school was built, that company went out of business. And, and the product has not particularly held up. That may be why they went out of business. And, and likely due to safety concerns and so forth, we can't really maintain the playground. Now, it's due for other work in terms of the surface. As we, as we renovate playgrounds, we're no longer using mulch. We go to a composite surface that you've seen around. And so, this is a, a total replacement essentially of that playground. And it was anticipated. It's a part of, of, we have an estimate for this school of, of $4 million. And this time next year, we will do work on the building itself as far as replacing that, we call it the mid-cycle renovations. And so, we'll re, replace the finishes on the inside of the building. We'll do some other work outside as well, but this is a significant part of it.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the bid award for the West Clay Elementary School Playground Improvements?
So moved.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Discussion. Kristen?
I just wanted to note that a few of us were able to tour West Clay Elementary and then kind of learned about the playground situation. So, it was a really nice, as board members, we felt like we needed to be there and see the school, see what was going on. So, we were able to tour and learn the changes that needed made, that will be made. And just wanted to let you know, we're doing our due diligence to, to make sure that we're spending the money wisely.
Greg, did you have something?
Yeah, just a question on the, this was a low bid of the two bids. What did we expect it to pay? Was there like a budget number done before?
There was an early estimate that was about 1.5 or 6 million, I believe. So, this was a little higher than, than what had been estimated. Estimating is very challenging these days because prices are so volatile that in the past, you know, the, our, our construction management firm and others could rely to some, in part, on previous work. But now, whatever was, whatever the price was, you know, six months ago even, isn't necessarily the price today. Now, we're hoping to see that go the other way eventually. But, but at the moment, that's, that's been what's happening. You'll recall that we had a, a major issue with that on the Carmel High School Activity Center. And the steel part of that, which we awarded first because of the lead time, was, was near the estimate. But then, when we bid the rest of the building, it was, it was higher. And so, it's just, we, we've really been challenged in the last couple of years, really, with trying to estimate cost.
Any other questions? I do have a question. Are we hoping this will be in place before the school year, in the, the fall?
It, it will not. We, in part because of the, the long lead time to get the, get the equipment. Once, once the contractor has everything, it's relatively short period to, to do the installation. But we, we expect to, we, so the decision was, is we are going to award the bids. We are going to do the work as quickly as we can. That's why we did this separate from the rest of the building. And, but it'll likely be, based on the estimates for delivery, and that's an estimate as well. It, it probably, it probably won't be finished till October, probably no, end of October even, maybe around November. And we, of course, talked to the principal about, you know, alternatives to, for play areas and so forth. So, we'll manage it.
Well, there's going to be some very happy kiddos.
They'll be happy when it's finished.
Thank you. All right, we will now go on to a vote. All those in favor of approving the bid award for the West Clay Elementary School Playground, please signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries five to zero. We will now move on to the gift to the Carmel Clay Historical Society, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. I brought this to you at the previous meeting and, and as, as for discussion. And now, recommending that the board does gift this art collection that we have, that we've not used nearly 30 years, to the Carmel Clay Historical Society. They've pledged to display the pieces and make them available to the public. And should they ever choose to dispose of any, any, any piece of the work, that any, any sales proceeds would, would come back to the school corporation.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the gift to the Carmel Clay Historical Society?
So moved.
I'll go with Greg. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Louise, discussion. The only thing I would say is, Mr. McMichael, is if you could just kind of keep us posted on how it goes, I would love to, I would love to see it. All right, all those in favor of proving the gift to the, to the historical society, please signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries five to zero. Thank you. All right, now, the last item on our action is the proposed Chinese garden at Carmel Elementary School, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. We presented this two times, I believe. But, but most recently, some students from Purdue, along with their instructor, gave a presentation to the board. This project's being designed essentially by Purdue students. And, and, and so, it's a kind of a joint project, also with, with the Parks Department is, is overseeing it. And there's, there's a very generous donor, I believe, that's contributing to the, to fund the project. And so, we would recommend the board's approval of, of this Chinese garden.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the Chinese garden at Carmel Elementary School?
So moved.
Thank you, Kristen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Louise, any discussion? What, do you get to it now?
I serve on the Parks Board, so I was at our meeting last week. Yes, this, just so you know, this garden will be part of the, the Parks Department. Not, there won't be school money spent just using some of the school land. So, it'll be mostly city funds, then a, a very generous, generous donation by a, someone who is a citizen of Carmel. And so, I know they'll be very excited if this moves forward.
Yeah, the renderings were amazing. And I, and I drove past it, I'm like, that's a little bit, it was like a little spot. So, I was like, good luck with that. But, any other discussions? Oh, Greg?
Yeah. I agree that we saw a presentation before, and it's, it's a beautiful project. And I think it'll be a great testimony to the nature of our country, which is a melting pot of cultures and peoples. And, and we talked briefly about this before, that there is a storytelling wall that's going to be on one of the walls in the garden. And it's not real clear, and I don't think it's decided yet, what will be in the story. But, and I also noticed that the final design will be approved by Carmel Clay Schools Administration. So, I would just encourage that we make sure we don't have political kind of stories and that it's, it remains in a, you know, the cultural kind of thing, or describes the garden. But, just something I wanted to share.
So, if you could just, Dr. Rea, anything that you hear regarding that? If you could just keep us posted, that'd be great. Thank you. Kristen?
I can clarify that a little bit. I know, being on the Parks Board, their intent is to speak with the Chinese community here in Carmel and use, you know, more like children's stories and, and folklore and some of the, some of the history of the country is, it will be the intent. I do also know from the meeting last week that there will be a professional architect and, and landscape firm working to build the space. While it was designed by students who did a fantastic job, it, the actual execution will be done by paid professionals.
And then, same to you, as you're Parks Board, if you would just keep us updated as progresses, I think that would be wonderful, too. Any other questions, thoughts, comments? All right, we will now take a vote. All those in favor of the Chinese garden at Carmel Elementary School, please signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries five to zero. All right, that's all for our action items for tonight. We will now move on to our discussion items, which we just kind of talked a lot about. But it is the final form of public question for the referendum, Dr. Bearsford.
Thank you. And I'll just try to make it, make it quick, since we've talked about some. But pursuant to IC 2046-1-10.1, in order for a school corporation to renew its existing referendum levy, the form of the referendum question must be approved by the school board, making certain findings and the Department of Local Government Finance prior to these being certified to the county in order to be placed on the November 2023 budget. To meet this timing, the board will be asked formally approve the form of the question at its June 26th meeting. Therefore, the possible form of the question is being introduced tonight for discussion. I know you guys have that as an attachment, but I, I think I'll just read it. Now, as I read this, this is not something that, like, we just came up with and thought it would, sounded nice. This is all in the Indiana code, and basically, it's a template. And then there's certain pieces of it, which I'll point out, that we actually get to, to put into the question. And then that has to be approved by the Department of Local Government Finance. And, and so, there's a lot of different pieces to it. So, this is that next step and that we'll bring to.
Are you? Sorry.
Yes.
Were you able to share it on the screen? I should have asked sooner.
I, I am not prepared to do that.
Yeah. Thank you, sorry.
You're asking the wrong person. You should, that's right down there.
Thanks.
But I will kind of fill you in on how it, you know, what pieces that we have. So, so anyhow, the first part is just Shaw Carmel Clay Schools. So, we get to put our, our, our school corporation in there. "Continues to impose increased property taxes paid to the school corporation by homeowners and businesses for eight years immediately following the holding of the referendum for the purpose of," and this is where we get to put in why you, the board, would say this is why we want to have this referendum. "It's for the purpose of retaining and attracting teachers, educational staff, and other support staff, and fund educationally related programs at the current minimum, maximum referendum rate of .19 cents per $100 of assessed valuation." So, that's a big, long question. So, then the next piece of it says, "The property tax increase requested in this referendum was originally approved by voters in 2017. And if extended, will increase the average property tax paid to the school corporation per year on a residence within the school corporation by," and that's the percentage that we're getting from the auditor. So, that's where that percentage that you did the resolution for earlier, that's what goes in there. And then it says, "And if extended, will increase the average property tax paid to the school corporation per year on business property within the school corporation by that percentage." Again, that will come from the auditor and then be certified by the auditor. So, that is the question, and we've got it up there now. So, really, when you look at it, we have like three spots to fill in. One is the purpose of the referendum. And then the other two are those percentages coming from the, the auditor. And don't ask me how they come up with the percentages. It's, it's a spreadsheet that has nine different columns. And it's, you'll have to go to Mr. McMichael for that.
Yeah, I don't know, I couldn't get it to come to the, you know, the exact answer, which we don't have yet. But, but although we've had it estimated. And I, I, I believe, this question also has to be approved by the state. And we believe that, and, and this is new since we did this the last time. So, we believe that it may be modified because the, since we're, we're asking for the same rate as it talks about increasing your taxes. Typically, what would be there would be if we didn't have a rate, and we were going to add 19 cents, that would be the percentage that your, you know, your taxes would go up. But here, it's not going to be a matter of increasing your taxes, although, as, as we discussed earlier, they may go up based on the assessed value, but it's not because of a new rate. And so, we're not sure how the final question will read, but it, but it does have to be approved by the state.
So...
And this has incorporated some of the new language from the latest bill in the legislature. But there's still, the lawyers are still evaluating that language. But we believe this is, this is pretty darn close.
All right, I'll now open it up for discussion. Questions from the board? Greg?
Just a point of clarification. Dr. Bearsford, I think you, you just made a reading mistake when we were talking about the background. I think you mentioned November 20, this will be placed on the November 2023, I think you said budget, which I think you meant ballot. I mean, it's written here as ballot.
Yeah, ballot is correct.
Thank you. I just wanted to say one comment. And I was, I was talking with you earlier, Dr. B, was how, how, this is a very serious question that we're asking our community. It is something that we take our fiduciary responsibilities very, very seriously. that we take our fiduciary responsibilities very, very seriously. I am so thankful for the people of Carmel Clay Schools' history and boards of the past who were responsible enough that what you see today in our buildings and our grounds and our classrooms and all the things that we have, it's because, you know, we've managed our money very well. And Dr. B, and lately you've really kind of really helped with that, and especially thanks to you, Mr. McMichael. Because I know that so much of that is because of you. And we want, not only as board members, but of citizens, to have it where we know that our money's being used well and correctly. And so I just want to say, in my, what is it now? It feels like a long time, six years on the board, I have really kind of seen that. And when we come to you as a district saying that we need additional, it's very much so for, you know, a needed. We wouldn't come otherwise. I very much so appreciate that for our safety referendum, we did, if we don't need it, we don't take it. And I also, you know, it's one of the things where I'm very excited about in the next few months, that we're going to educate our community even more about the referendum and why we need it and where the money goes and, and understanding school finance. You know, it's, people find it very hard to believe that we're the second lowest funded school district in the state of Indiana. And, you know, it's because we work really hard to do, go very far with the money that we have. So that's just more of a commentary. I just wanted to say thank you to you. Thank you to the people, administration of years past and board members of years past for taking care of things so that we're, we are in as good a shape as we are right now, which you don't see in a lot of districts. So anyway, I'm done now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we all, we all need help. So thank you. Anything else? All right. We will now move on to our next discussion item, the materials adoption, Part Three. Dr. Dudley?
Thank you. And so tonight for discussion, I bring to you, I promised the very last materials adoption for this season. And there's two additional materials adoption. One is our criminal justice principals course. And this is a new career and technical education pathway that we have implemented for next year. And so this pathway starts with the principals course, and then students take four courses, an A and a B course, and then it culminates in a capstone course where the students have the opportunity to have a work-based experience in the area of criminal justice. And so we're really excited about offering this new CTE pathway. This CTE pathway is also a dual credit. So this, the book that we are recommending is a book through Ivy Tech that they have a list of books that we can use to adopt. And that's where this book has come from. We are in the process of hiring a teacher for the criminal justice pathway, and we're very excited. We have sixty students that are signed up for this course for this next year. So we have a, a big interest in the number of students that want to take the CTE pathway. And the other course that I have on here is our Applied Interpersonal Relations. And this is, this counts as a health credit. Our students can take either health or interpersonal relations. The applied courses are courses that are for our students that are most cognitively delayed students. So this might be students that are in our life skills classes or our FAP classes, where these students will either complete high school with a certificate of completion, or the state has approved a new alternative diploma. So some of these students will actually, they'll complete high school and it'll be for this year, our class of 2023, that they can earn this alternative diploma. And what that is, is they take a combination of either the regular courses or the applied courses that are the same number of either credits. The applied courses give units, but they have to accumulate so many credits or units in a variety, and so many English's, so many maths, the health, the PE, the elective courses for our students that have the opportunity to earn that alternative diploma. And so we're very excited about offering this. This is a course that, we have many applied courses in our English and math, and also in some of our different elective courses. This one also helps with making sure that our students get the credit they need in health. On the gen ed side, we also have interpersonal relations course that is not the applied course, that also fulfills the health credit for our students. So those are the last two courses with the materials. And so any questions you might have?
Questions from the board?
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. We'll now move on to reports. Dr. Oestreich?
Good evening once again, President Browning, Dr. Bearsford, and members of the board. I am excited to introduce Mrs. Stephanie Whiteside, our current mental health leader in the district, and members of her team this evening as they will present tonight's Student Services Report on Carmel Clay Schools' Skills for Success. Mrs. Whiteside and the team have embarked on a year and a half research project identifying skills needed for our students in order to be successful in school, at home, and beyond. Our CCS Skills for Success focuses on social skills, interpersonal skills, and employability skills while providing a common framework, language, and definitions for our students, staff, parents, as well as our community. There's been a lot of negativity and inaccurate information surrounding social and emotional learning in recent years. Regardless of how others may interpret social emotional learning, we are proud of the work our district has done supporting our students. And our Skills for Success will continue to build on that foundation as we support our students academically, socially, and emotionally. Research studies consistently show social emotional learning, character skills, employability skills, and Skills for Success improve academic success, decrease behavioral issues, and also improve student safety and the climate where students attend school. We want our students, as Dr. B often says, we want them to be known and loved, challenged appropriately, and have the character skills necessary in order to be successful. I want to thank our Skills for Success team for working with numerous stakeholders over the past year and a half, including teachers, counselors, social workers, principals, students, parents, and community members. This work has been presented to our PTO Coordinating Council as well as our expedition team. In addition, our own working group has examined the research on these skills among other district-level stakeholders. So we look forward to continuing to support our students. And with that, I'd like to turn it, turn over tonight's presentation to Mrs. Stephanie Whiteside.
Thank you so much. So I'm happy to be here tonight. It's been an exciting night. And so I want to talk a little bit about our Skills for Success initiative that we have embarked on and have been working on for a little over a year now. So to get started, and before I get started, I'd like to do a little bit of an activity with the board, but those in the audience can feel free to join as well. So I would like you to pick a child who is important to you. It could be a child of your own. It could be a niece, nephew. It could even be you as a child. And I want you to write down skills, traits, characteristics that you think needs, a child would need in order to be successful in school All right. I think we're about set here. So what I want you to do is I'm going to read out, make a couple statements, and I want you to raise your hand if it pertains to you and those five skills. So if all five of your responses are taught through academic standards, raise your hand. If four are, raise your hand. If three of those are taught through academic standards, raise your hand. Two. One. Now, raise your hand if any of your responses can be assessed through standardized tests. Raise your hand if one or more of your responses have to do with grit, growth mindset, or persevering through life's challenges. Raise your hand if one or more of your responses have to do with working with others, having strong relationships, or resolving conflict. One or more, raise your hand if one or more of your responses have to do with goal setting and work ethic. And raise your hand if one or more of your responses have to do with managing stress or regulating emotions. All right. So this brings us to our Skills for Success here. So as we know, for those who've been following the research of social emotional learning, employability, we often find that there are common standards or common skill sets that we often talk about as necessary in order to enrich our students as they're moving towards their futures. And often, you know, we hear these called so many different things. So I've just started calling it the whatchamacallit. Because when you look at social emotional learning, it often intersects with employability skills or college and career readiness. And so that is where we really discussed identifying those key skills that are ours, that we can really develop in our students based off of not only research, but often, but also based on some of the feedback that we receive from our students, from our families, our teachers, and our administrators. So that gets us to the why for Skills for Success. So I started here in 2019, and I was here for nine months, and then I was sent home one day and was there for quite a while. And even returning back, we noticed that it wasn't quite yet a sense of normalcy. So we really had to work on just getting our students through some of the sudden transitions that they had to make. We had started to form a lot of our values and our ideas around social emotional learning at that time. However, a lot of it switched to just helping our students get through the day, helping our teachers get through the day. And we decided this year that, you know, now that the dust has settled, we really wanted to take a step back and look at the work that we have done, which has been successful, and then build upon that in order to keep moving forward and to just build up our consistency and our capacity. So we identified the need for Skills for Success. And we identified that we wanted to better define a skill set that would be required for personal and professional success. Like I said, we wanted it to be informed by our students, by educators, by parents, caregivers, community members. And we wanted to build that increased ownership, you know, by the district as a whole. We wanted it to be consistent and focused, which means we would be scaffolding and building upon those skills. And we wanted to have that common language and just build that vertical and horizontal alignment. We also wanted it to eliminate redundancies. So as I said, if we look at the whatchamacallit, a lot of these skills intersect. We hear them come up often. And so we really wanted to be able to focus without worrying about what's the next whatchamacallit. So we also knew that in order to really build our Skills for Success, we had to look beyond academics. So I'm going to play a video. Oh, I don't think it's linked on here. Let me click again and see if it, oh, it does. Good. All right. So I'm going to play a video from one of our students who is the U.S. Presidential Scholar.
So obviously Carmel is largest school in Indiana. And as Archie said, we have such a wide variety of students with so many different interests. And I think that really just allows us to explore everything we want to explore. And that's such a positive thing in Carmel High School. But going beyond the students and the different peers we have here, I think the teachers and the mentors have played such a vital role in shaping the student I am today, but also shaping the person I am. So a lot of my teachers, like Mrs. Hargrove, or mentors like Mrs. Stefan, they've really played such an incredible role in sort of helping me develop the characteristics I want to carry into life. And I think that's even more important than the academic setting and the variety of courses or whatnot that Carmel High School does offer.
Which I think is very well stated. And once again, you know, makes the point of how important some of these Skills for Success are in the lives of our students. Moving on, so when we really started this project, we began to explore, what does Skills for Success look like? You know, what does success look like for our students? And so one of the things that we knew we had to do was really look at research and best practices. We also looked at our current practices in emotional intelligence, character development, and employability. We created a team of educators, counselors, social workers, administrators that would explore a lot of this research and identify those key skills that really came out of that research. We also wanted to identify grade-related or grade level indicators of skill development and growth, since we know that what we would be developing is going to look different in a second grader than in an eighth grader. We also wanted to utilize our current resources. So we have so many resources within our district already. And so really, it was identifying what resources we have and how we can utilize that across the district. And then we also wanted to identify best practices to overcome barriers and challenges in implementing and developing our long-term capacity across the district. We wanted Skills for Success to be consistently developed through the K-12 experience. We wanted it to be attainable and meaningful for all of our students. We also wanted it to be relevant to instruction and learning and recognize that within learning, there are many opportunities to develop these skills. We wanted it to be not only applicable, applicable for today's world, but also the world in the future. And we wanted it to be inclusive of cultural beliefs and practices. Our Skills for Success team consisted of three elementary teachers, three middle school, five high school teachers, three social workers and counselors, three building administrators, and three district administrators. We also did focus groups with teachers, students, and with parents. And some of the things that we identified that were necessary from, from their perspective is just having that clear and consistent communication, having a common understanding of how we develop those skills within the classroom, and also that consistency with our communication to home. We are taking into account the unique developmental experience of our students, that we're not grading these skills, but really developing it and allowing students to have buy-in, also including a mutual understanding of the importance of these skills. Once again, we want our students to be motivated to achieve and to grow in their learning, and then also to provide those opportunities for consistent development and education that we knew would enhance our learning environment. So our process as a whole, so in September, we kicked off after we identified our team members. And really, that day was about diving into the research. We really took it apart. We started looking at what are just best practices. We even looked at, how do we define success? How do others define success? And we looked at research for children, even adults. We even looked at employability research and Forbes and what everybody was saying about what they're looking for in new hires. We also looked at, you know, our, the thoughts and the, the feedback from our building administrators on what they were doing and what they found successful as well. In October, November, we had our kickoff meeting, and that's when we were reviewing that research. We also were able to discuss some of the current and past district initiatives and kind of how we felt those were going, where we felt that there were areas of growth, and then those things we wanted to move forward. And we did that in order to create our, you know, our, our portrait of a graduate. And we wanted to begin, like I said, formalizing that definition of success, which we did in December through February. We were able to break into our grade focus groups and identify our learning indicators. We were able to, once again, review some of that student and parent focus group information. And then we were able to explore and narrow down those key skills for success and begin to develop those. Then March through April, we continued our focus group feedback. We got lots of great feedback. We continued to formalize the eight Skills for Success. And then we also started to identify some of our, our resources and tools that we would be able to utilize to monitor growth. And then finally, in May, we clearly defined and finalized our skill sets. We were able to identify our learning indicators and our success criteria. We were able to formalize our plan for rollout. And I am here today to present to you. So defining success, this was one that was very difficult of just what is success? Because what we find is that so many individuals have different definitions of success and how they measure their own success. So one thing we found through So one thing we found through research and through our focus groups, we developed the definition that success is the continuous process of fulfilling one's goals by utilizing external and internal resources to overcome barriers and cultivate overall wellness. We know that this is an ongoing process. There is no finish line where we can say, okay, I'm a success, I'm good to go, I don't need to develop these skills. But we also know that not only do we need those internal skills to be able to be successful and achieve our goals, but also it helps to have those external supports, whether it's your teacher, your building administrator, whether it's your church community. We are very dependent on our external resources as well. And then Skills for Success. Once again, before I introduce those skills, we identified that the characters and strategies that these would be employed by the individuals and would really help continuing, continue to grow that emotional intelligence and interpersonal confidence. We wanted, once again, for it to be developed, K-12, and we wanted to make sure that we were able to identify how we were growing those skills. So our Skills for Success include self-initiative, growth mindset, connection, regulation, problem-solving, insight, perseverance, and collaboration. So I'm going to go a little bit more into those and define them. So initiative, an individual's belief and their ability to take action, assert self, and succeed. And so that is one of our big-picture goals, but we may be doing things like talking about self-confidence, helping students with reflecting on some of their choices and decisions, increasing independence in decision-making, helping with self-regulation and discipline, and enhancing motivation. We have growth mindset, which is an individual's ability to remain cognitively flexible and maintain an attitude that contributes to a willingness to learn and grow. This goes along with resilience and open-mindedness, but also curiosity, self-confidence, reflection, and lifelong learning. Connection is the ability to build and maintain mutually beneficial relationships with others. We talk about communication, relatability, active listening, respect, even humility and social awareness, as well as perspective-taking, team-building, and empathy, just to name a few. And we have regulation, the ability to recognize and manage one's thoughts, emotions, and behaviors in different situations in order to accomplish those personal and collective goals. This has a lot to do with self-management, impulse control, self-monitoring, flexibility, adaptability, and self-agency. We identified problem-solving, which is the ability to make caring and constructive choices in order to resolve problems and overcome challenges. The sub-skills include many of those that I mentioned: curiosity, growth mindset, empathy, critical thinking, communication, responsible decision-making, flexibility, teamwork, resilience. And insight, the ability to clearly understand how thoughts and emotions impact the self and others. This would include self-awareness, having situational awareness, being able to regulate themselves, having empathy and adaptability, as well as setting boundaries, and advocating, and also that reflection as well. And then perseverance, the ability to remain focused and committed despite obstacles and delays in order to reach the goal or solution, which would include working on determination, maintaining a goal focus, identifying self-worth in what they're adding to a situation or how they're problem-solving, even accepting delayed gratification. Collaboration, the ability to work constructively with others in order to accomplish a common task or goal. Once again, we're looking at adaptability, cognitive flexibility, inclusion, active listening. And so those are the initial definitions for our Skills for Success. Just to give you an example of what our learning intentions and success criteria may be around those Skills for Success, so as we know, we develop the learning intentions with our success criteria. These are examples, as we know, best practices to really do this collaboratively with our students. But looking at our grade band for K-2, it may look, the initiative intention may look like, I'm learning how to start my work independently. Or, you know, 3-5 maybe, I'm learning how to take initiative in classrooms. And it could look like just how can I follow directions and work, you know, on my own, independently? It may be, how can I ask for help when I feel stuck or I don't know the answer? It may even be learning how to define what initiative means and what skills and sub-skills belong to that term. Also, describing how they can take initiative and how initiative may affect their life and academics. Then we have connection for grade 6-8. So an example of connection, a learning intention may be, I'm learning how my actions and words affect others. And so they may be able to verbalize the difference between a helpful and a hurtful comment in actions that may be based on the response of themselves or others. And then looking at perseverance and how that might look for 9-10, or 11 and 12. And as you can see through this, it's starting to become, it's starting to develop and mature as far as what they're learning, and then also that introspect there and how much that is developing in those students. So looking at, I'm learning to achieve long-term progress and goals. I'm learning to set, you know, a reasonable pace to accomplish my tasks and achieve my goals. I can identify tools to prioritize and accomplish challenges or accomplish tasks to address challenges. So how do we develop these skills? What are those best practices we identified? Number one, it's as simple sometimes as just adult modeling. So us being able to demonstrate some of those skills are, as we know from mirror neurons, many of our students that are watching us are learning from us. And so that even comes to, you know, that even depends on some of those skills as well. Number two is developing that common language and having communication between the school and home on what that language is or what the terminology is around our Skills for Success. So that would include those definitions and what we're working on. Also, looking at that K-12 alignment and collaboration, and that goes along with that common language, and when we looked at those learning intentions, we want to make sure that we are doing intentional activities that are focused on those actions or skill sets that we're trying to develop. Also, we know that just those organic day-to-day interactions that are happening between students and teachers and students and other students sometimes provide the best lessons when it comes to Skills for Success. And then also, developing the capacity for our students to be able to self-assess and self-monitor, to be able to identify, here's my strengths, here's the areas where I need to grow. So strategies for monitoring development, we look at student feedback and self-assessment. We also are looking at parent and caregiver feedback and communication. As we know, oftentimes when I talk with some of our teachers and they've done parent-teacher conferences, they say, conversation may have started on one subject in grade, but very quickly moves into a conversation about those skills. And then looking at just adult observation and assessment, especially in our younger-age students, where sometimes our adults are aware of, you know, when a student may be, you know, struggling to participate in a group or struggling to ask a question. And then moving to our implementation phase, where we will be building capacity. So one thing that we've identified moving forward is that we'd like to create a CCS success team, which would identify building-level experts who create resources and supports district-wide. These individuals would be able to be a support in their building and are able to identify best practices and contribute to those within the building. They also would maintain a district database of resources and approved activities that are evidence and research-based, and are focused on the development of these skills at the district and building level. And then a building success team, which, this is not a new thing. Many of our buildings already have teams that really focus on how we can we continue to develop these skills. So really looking at building-level activities based on those needs, based on some of the building goals, as we know each of our buildings are unique. And then also just continuing to look at what activities and supports do we have and how can we continue to grow those? And then our next steps. So really breaking it down by semester, we have our upcoming semester for 2023, 2024, and really just looking at doing education about the skills, working with our administrators to identify and review the definition of those skills and activities that they're doing in their building, beginning to identify those building-level representatives for a district success team, and then really beginning to review some of those learning intentions and just exploring how we can develop district resources to support those. With Semester Two, really starting to, you know, really build a robust library. So we'll be exploring that in September, or in Semester One, but definitely in Semester Two, that's when we're going to be building that, identifying professional development and other types of supports for our staff, and then beginning to assess just our district-wide systems and procedures that might provide, you know, some, a little bit more in-depth knowledge on how we can better align some of our current practices with Skills for Success. And then the next year, looking at that semester, the first semester, you know, really starting to work more at the building level, continuing to provide professional development, which goes into semester, the second semester, which would be continuing to build that team, identifying activities, identifying goals for the next school year, and continuing professional development and parent-community engagement as well. So I do want to say thank you to our success team. We have two of our, two members of our success team. If you wouldn't mind standing up, we have Rebecca Overbay and Don Luhmeyer. And big thank you to them. As you can see, we had great representation, but this was, you know, not only our meetings, but even just hours of research and of discussion and meetings, you know, outside of our main meetings as well. So it was, I'm very grateful to them, both and to our whole team, who were able to really support this work. This is just a snapshot. I am one where if you give me an assignment, I can do 16 pages, but five is hard for me. So this was a lot of work to even condense with all of the work that they did, the research and findings that they had. But we're really excited about Skills for Success. I do want to say, in doing the focus group, one thing that was, that was apparent was that this work is being done. So I don't want to say that we're going to be changing anything completely or doing, you know, throwing something out and doing something new. What we found from our students, all the way down to like first grade, is that they were using words like integrity, you know, using words like responsibility. They were really clearly able to identify how they defined success, and they were also able to really identify the skills that they were working on and developing. So I just want to thank all of our teachers across the district, as we know this is hard work, and they've done a phenomenal job. And so hopefully, this can support their efforts in the classroom. So I just want to say thank you so much. It was a joy to do this work, and it is a joy to present it to you today.
Well, first of all, Stephanie, thank you. Way to go out with a bang. We are so thankful for the time and effort and energy and love that you've given Carmel Clay Schools, and we wish you nothing but the best on your next adventure. This was overwhelming. There's so much information to take in. I'm very excited. I'm going to open it up to the board, because I'm sure we all have questions. For, just real quick, two thoughts. Is this something that's going to be on the website so that our community and parents can see all these different things?
Absolutely. We're really excited. We've already started that work, and so we're really excited to add more to it as well.
And also that success criteria for the different age groups. If you guys like run out of things to do, I'd love one for like 38-year-olds and like what I need to do. So it's kind of like, I was like, oh, that's great. Oh, like, you know, keep going.
That is why self-help is a trillion-dollar industry. All of us are trying to develop.
So again, thank you so much. I am going to open up to the board. Thoughts, Jenny?
So this is so critical. As a business owner, looking to hire someone in such a very tight business, competitive job market, this, in the last week, I've done, tried to conduct 17 interviews of the, and these are for a younger, typically a younger person in the job market. Seven didn't show up, three were in hooded sweatshirts that covered theirs, so I couldn't really even see their face, two were late, three could not make simple eye contact. So that left of the 17, two people for me to seriously consider. So these job skills are very critical. In the last year, as I've hired people, and, you know, we're a 90-year-old business. It's not that we don't have a reputation and people aren't going to apply, but people did not know basic phone skills, they didn't know how to operate a regular landline, they were not able to, again, make eye contact when we had families coming in who had just experienced a death. They didn't understand what professional dress was. They, we've sent them to the Board of Health to purchase death certificates, they didn't know how to write a check. So they had to come back, wasting hours in driving and coming back, didn't even think to call to say, I don't know how to write this check, or ask about that before they left on the journey. Difficulty arriving on time, and just basic knowledge of business etiquette. So these skills are not new skills. I remember in 1984, taking Skills for Living at North Central High School. So these are skills that we have fallen down on the job, imparting on our children. The pandemic did not help with that at all, as children were staying home and not interacting with other people. And I think parents, myself included, are hesitant sometimes to reopen the gates and allow that free interaction because we're afraid and we have developed some anxiousness over increased interpersonal interaction. So I applaud that. It is necessary. As a businessperson, it can't come any too soon. So thank you, and thank you for your work in the district.
Thank you.
Louise?
Growth mindset.
It's her favorite word. I tapped her when that showed.
Connection.
It was a fan favorite.
Connection, humility, those three right there just really like rested on me, and I can't think of a moment where I don't have to deploy those as a parent, as a spouse, as a friend, as a board member. And so I'm just excited that we're going to try to be proactive, as Greg was talking about earlier, be proactive in helping younger students acquire these skills in a very intentional way, in hopes that maybe this will help when they're trying to determine how to handle challenges in life, right? You know, we've had these tragedies happening in school, and you wonder if you, if we can lean in more on these key things that, you know, our students need, maybe they'll choose another path instead of anger and hurting others, you know? So just really grateful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Kristen? Greg?
Yeah, I have some questions. That was a lot of information. And Jennifer, I appreciate sharing those real-world experiences that we're seeing with younger people these days. And I think it's important that, that our children be developed in these skills. And certainly, I applaud that, you know, those came to light and that we're going to try to help in those skills. And Tom, you'd mentioned that there's, the words, social-emotional learning has gained a lot of concern over the last few years, and there's reasons for that. And I notice we don't, this is probably our next generation of that, I would assume. Is that a correct statement? That that, so this is like our social-emotional learning program, but now we're going to a new version of it, Phase Two? Or is this something totally different?
I would say what we're doing is we're defining it, we're having common language across the district, and I'm excited that our students will know what these skills are, employability skills, social-emotional skills, what have you. But we, they have the skills that research has proven, that the committee has taken, the team has taken a look at. We can divine them, we can talk about them, we can discuss them, and so we can zero in on focus on what that is. So I'm really excited that our students and that our families are going to have that opportunity.
Thank you. Also, we've had a couple presentations, and you did one a while back, Amy, or Stephanie, on the mental health crisis that we're dealing with here. And I think, like I said, I think we all are terrified of it, and it's a huge problem. We talked about prevention, and how do you see this, do you expect this to address that problem? And how, if so, how would you measure, how do you know that we're helping deal with this problem? Because it's one thing to know phone etiquette and Because it's one thing to know phone etiquette and some of those kinds of skills, you know, and how to do an interview and those things, but it's another thing, and I like the fact you had the word resiliency in there a few times. I think that's something that's been perhaps overlooked in what's going on with our children these days, and there's, it's complicated, like we've talked about, there's lots of factors, I'm sure. But how do you see us improving, or do you see us improving our mental health crises with the Skills for Success program?
Yeah, so, and I think that's a great question. It's a question that, you know, across the board, all of us, you know, mental health professionals are asking ourselves as we continue to work with children, and even adults, when it comes to mental illness. However, I really look at this as just a way of continuing to promote just overall wellness, not even just mental wellness, but overall wellness. I think there's multiple factors on, you know, why we're kind of in this state when it comes to pediatric mental health and mental illness. I would say, you know, I often hear the word crisis, but I do find that a lot of our students are very resilient, and we have a lot of great students who are doing amazing work and are very much aware of, you know, some of the challenges that they face and are very much advocates for themselves and for their peers, and that's exciting. And so really, as I look at what, as a district, we can do to support students, noting that, you know, we can, we can speak to education, I see us being able to provide, you know, some of the work on these Skills for Success, along with our equity inclusion and our rigorous academics. Those are, those are the lanes that we have in order to impact our students and support our students within our buildings.
Go ask another question?
I would, I would commend you on that, because I know that in my son's 21 interviews for his residency program, only one of the interviewers asked him if he could name different key components from Roman history, but every single one of the interviews, at least the ones that I could hear from the other room, were asking him, how do you work well with individuals? How do you deal with stress because you're going to be working so many hours? How, in a difficult situation where you felt that you were wronged, how were you able to still come to the table and be collaborative in that situation? And so while children and individuals are struggling, and certainly we all see that, it's getting these skills so that they can come to difficult situations and know how to act responsibly and collaboratively and with compassion. And I think one of the reasons that we're seeing more instances of these come to light in terms of mental health is because now students and teachers are, and people in general, are more comfortable talking about it. So it's not necessarily that there's a higher incidence, although certainly the pandemic may have influenced that. It's also that we are more comfortable admitting when we have a weakness and looking for help. And so certainly, at the very beginning of that curve, the numbers are going to go much higher. So, thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else before I have? Oh, go ahead, Kristen.
I just wanted to thank you, as a couple of us have, I, from what I do professionally as a speech therapist, I know that these kinds of skills are just seamlessly put into what we do with, at many pediatric therapy practices, it's just what we do as part of other goals. And so I know that that's also, from being in the expedition program, what it looks like in the classroom. It's part of the morning meeting, and the kids just kind of, they love that part of checking in on their friends. If their friends aren't there, they, I really enjoyed that part, you know, wishing their friends well who were sick or who weren't at school for whatever reason. But I just had a quick question as a side to that comment. I think, I guess it's a question, comment. I know this is meant, you know, more as an overall program in the school, and, but there are, you know, for children, students who are experiencing mental health difficulties, there are separate programs that, that, that this is not meant as a be-all, end-all for that, correct?
Right, absolutely. And hopefully, you know, as we talked about those foundational skills, you know, when we talk about things like communication, if someone's not doing well, being able to communicate that to the right person and advocate for themselves to receive support, I think is huge. So definitely more looking at big-picture foundational, and then we will continue to, you know, work with our families to identify our students who may be struggling and may need those additional supports in place.
Anything else, and then, go ahead.
A couple more. You mentioned building a success team, and I think it's at the building level. It wasn't, I wasn't real clear on that, if you could elaborate, but it sounds like we're going to include parents.
So the success team are really looking at, you know, each building having a representative from their building, so whether that's a teacher, or social worker, counselor, administrator, who's able to kind of work as a, kind of a work group to really identify resources and activities that are research and evidence-based, that can support any explicit discussion of that skill.
And lastly, I'll stop at this one, that you mentioned in there too, I may not have quite got this correct, but perhaps you can elaborate again, that you mentioned that students aren't graded on how well they're doing, that's not necessarily graded in how they're doing with their Skills for Success, but they're somehow monitored, and, can you explain what that would look like and how you would do that?
Yeah, you know, at times, and a lot of our teachers are already doing this, but, you know, as a student finishes a lesson, asking, you know, how they felt about that lesson, do they feel like they understand the material? You know, what else do they need, you know, in order to feel more confident with the material? So it could be something as simple as just asking for feedback. It could be, you know, more formal even, where we talk about like student feedback. I know we currently do student feedback surveys, and also just even family feedback as well. So there's multiple layers for ways that we can assess that information in a manner where students aren't feeling like, you know, they have to get an A in growth mindset.
Yeah, what you're alluding to is, you know, y'all know I'm a data person. Right. I want to see the data. But we're talking about how there is quantitative data, numerical data, and there's also qualitative data. And that's how are you feeling? Are you more connected? Those kinds of things, and I think that both of them are very valuable, so I appreciate that you're speaking to getting students' thoughts and feedback about how they're doing. So thank you for that.
And can you, part of Greg's question was parent involvement, can you just expand a little bit on that?
Yeah, so really looking at, and so I talked about kind of our district success team and our building level, you know, really, we already work so closely with some of our PTOs and parents that volunteer and help out at the school, and really including some of that voice and identifying, you know, what supports there are, what they're identifying, and what they would like to add to, and developing some of these skills. I think sometimes they, they have that insight, because, you know, once again, if that student's coming home and sharing some of the information about their school day, it's a great opportunity for those discussions, and then that homeschool communication to happen.
Perfect. And then my very last comment was some, something that we didn't really talk about, but I only see the academics like benefiting from this. I mean, we talk a lot about all these other skilled things, but like using all of those skills towards their homework, their tests, their, you know, all the different activities, their extracurriculars, I mean, I see that only a ripple effect of positive things that, you know, their, their inner wellbeing, but I also think, you know, the outside stuff too is only going to also have success. So I just want to make that comment. Thank you again. Thank you for coming. I wish you nothing but the best in the future. Thank you for this presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
All right. We do not have a Carmel Clay Parks Department report tonight. All you Dr. B.
All right. Well, thank you. And Stephanie, before you step out, I want to do a shout-out to you for your work here. This may be your last presentation for the board, so we've really benefited from, from your hard work and your knowledge, and really your heart. And, and I called it adventure too, as you set off on your next adventure. We were going to miss you, but your legacy at Carmel Clay Schools has been a great one. You led the partnership with St. Vincent Ascension after we got through the safety referendum to, to help, and you were almost two, just, I think just shy of two years ahead of schedule of fully staffing that. And, and for that to happen at such a critical time when a pandemic set in, couldn't have been more timely. And so all the students that were able to get the help that they needed during that time without, with reducing so many barriers, and your leadership was, was critical in, you know, having kids who were struggling through that pandemic. So I really appreciate that. Your leadership with school counselors and social workers has been outstanding, and been a go-to for that. Working with mental health leaders in the county to develop a, an emergency response team, I actually worked with Brooke Lawson, who we met earlier with that, and having a countywide response to, for when tragedy strikes, like we experienced with like car accidents and that sort of thing. And then tonight was just outstanding, outstanding report. I didn't have any doubt that it wouldn't be, but on the process and the outcome of this Skills for Success, really a study, and, and then the, you know, the vision for moving forward. One of the things I loved the most, that was on one bullet, was that having a common language at school and at home, and having common understanding when we use those words, what those words mean, because we know that kids, when they hear it's the same thing at home that they hear at school, go, oh, that must be right. So, and that's a really positive thing, I think. So, you know, thank you, thank you, thank you for all you've done, and students, family, staff we serve. So thank you. So we got some guys in the back there, I think, that I want you guys to know that we are celebrating National Police Week, and we're grateful for the entire Carmel Police Department, but we have a little special for our 21 school resource officers who make up our SRO unit. And I also want to take this opportunity to announce that the National Association of School Resource Officers announced that it will present its Model Agency Award to the Carmel Police Department. So that organization presents the awards to agencies that exemplify the training policies and standards, the Nazro Triad Concept, and that demonstrate creative and innovative approaches as to school-based policing. And in addition to this, you know, the, in addition to the department-wide recognition, also, School Resource Officer Juan, I'm not going to say his name wrong, but I think it's Neverett, is receiving special recognition. He won the Bridge the Gap Award for activities that demonstrate a significant commitment to positive behavioral intervention services and at-risk youth. So congratulations to Juan and CPD for what you do every day. Isn't it great to see good people get recognized at a national level, and it's just fantastic. Speaking of getting recognized at a high level, Carmel High School's top 10 ISMA winners, so they have this ISMA contest for the, it's the Indiana Music, you're going to have to help me with this, Indiana.
Indiana State School Music Association.
Yeah, that one. And so every Carmel choir, band, orchestra, middle school and high school group that attended all the contests received a gold. So the gold rating is the highest level of achievement you can get in that, so every single one. That one kind of made my eyes get big. And then you actually met one of these students tonight, but another incredible accomplishment is that every year, there's U.S. Presidential Scholars, and you saw a video with, with both of those students in there. Each state gets so many, in Indiana, we get two Presidential Scholars, and we've been really fortunate that in the last three years, we've had one of those be a kid from Carmel. This year, both of them are from Carmel. So to put it in some kind of perspective, out of the millions of graduating seniors, only 5,000 qualify to apply based on test scores. There are 161 total nationwide, so two from each state, and then some out, at-large winners. I think we had one, there was one out-large winner from Indiana. So you may have recognized, but it was Archit, Archit Kala, he's been, we've given him awards like, I think, every week now, here lately. And he's the one, the kid that scored a perfect score on both the ACT and the SAT, and he's just a phenomenal human being. Not only is he a super smart guy, but he's got a big heart and for people as well. So he's, he was one of them. The other one was Amoga Palura, and, or Palu, Palaru, I think I said it right the second time, I'm not going to say it again. But these are just crazy, and I think, I think she had a perfect ACT score. But beyond that, Archit is an avid Scrabble player, okay? So these are things you don't know about, these really super cool kids. So do not play, do not challenge him to Scrabble, because you will lose. But he loves, he loves Scrabble. And then, and then Amoga, Amoga is a professional dancer, and so she's traveled all around the country to perform, and, and so just some, just some amazing kids there doing amazing things. But to have two Presidential Scholars is just off the hook, and if you're able to see their interview that they had, I think it was Rich Nye, wasn't it? It was just, just amazing. We got to see a little bit of it there this evening. Also, last Wednesday, we had our Teacher of the Year banquet with all the Teachers of the Year from all the schools, and the big winner was Christine David Duke from Woodbrook Elementary. She's a kindergarten teacher, and she is amazing. And so it was a great night, and always one of the highlights of the year. So then I had to pick a bell ringer, and it was kind of tough, and, but it kind of pushed me over the edge today, when I couldn't get through my exec team meeting, because everyone was talking about the Broadway quality of the musical, The Hunchback of Notre Dame. So this is the stuff I heard. Now, I was in Dallas, so I did not get to see, you know, one of the few things I didn't get to see, and then now I find out I missed the greatest thing in the world. But this is what I heard this morning. Because of the Broadway quality of the musical, the dazzling sets and effects, the acting, the music, the costumes, we're simply studying. I know some of you attended, and you want to, Katie, you want to jump in on that?
Yeah, so I love musical theater. I've seen like London, Broadway, all these things, and these students were magical. You would just close your eyes, and you would just listen, and it was amazing. The crew, the ushers, the, I mean, there was so much wonderful things to see that these kids were coming together, supporting each other, presenting things, like the full orchestra, I mean, it was, you were transported to another place. So hats off to Carmel High School. I think it's an amazing community thing that people can come and see the things that the kids are doing. The message of it was a beautiful, I mean, chef's kiss. It was amazing.
And it was a combination of the, like the play, but then they also brought the Disney music into it, so it was really brilliant, the way they pieced all that together. So kudos to all the students involved. The full cast was 72 students, and you had a full orchestra. Now, on top of that, you had like the people that made the sets, which were the, I saw pictures of the sets, they were amazing. So I'm told there's about 200 kids that were involved in putting that on, 200 kids, and making that happen. So kudos to the directors, volunteers, staff, administration, amazing work, and a shout-out to Quasimodo, Micah Phillips. That concludes my report. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Do you have the dates, our future meeting dates?
I do. Well, maybe I do. They're coming up.
They're coming. This is our only board meeting for the month of May. The last day of school is on May 25th. It's also the graduation date for the class of 2023, so huge congratulations to them. Our upcoming workshop is on June, on June 12th. We offices at Carmel Clay Schools are closed for Memorial Day, so if for some reason you would need to come to see it, that those are closed. We are also closed on Juneteenth, and we will have our school board regular session on June 26th. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five to zero. Have a good evening.